Do we have any other board members wishing to share information at this time? All right. Item 10.0, Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 10.1, Approve the 2012-13 District Budget Update and Revision State Approval. It is a conference action item, 10-minute presentation, 10-minute presentation. And Ms. Patricia Hagemeier.
Good evening, President Rodriguez, Board members, and Acting Superintendent Roberts. This evening, we're asking for your approval on budget revisions due to the final state budget that was signed on June 27, 2012. I'll go ahead and start, and then we can catch up. Education Code requires that within 45 days of signing the state budget, districts must make available to the public any revisions in revenues or expenditures that reflect changes due to the State Budget Act. This year, the state budget was signed on June 27. The major assumption included in the final state budget was the passage of the Governor's Tax Initiative, which would prevent revenue reductions to school districts in California. The next two slides are courtesy of School Services of California, and they paint a dismal future for education funding. The state continues to project higher revenues with cuts to education if those revenues are not received. Even with the tax initiative passing, school districts will not receive additional funds; they will just not be cut even deeper. This creates confusion for the public, and the perception is that if the tax initiative passes, schools will receive new funds. I'm on Slide number four. As we have discussed previously, the state is not increasing funds to schools. Districts have not received any new, ongoing funds since 2007/08, but yet many of our expenses continue to grow. As stated in this slide from School Services, we understand that funding can't be restored. What isn't understood is why we keep hearing that more money is going to our schools. On Slide number five, assumptions included in the state budget, along with the passage of the Governor's Tax Initiative, include a buy-down of deferrals. Again, not new money, but paying money that is already owed to us, helping our cash flow. Districts now have the choice of mandate funding from a block grant or to claim reimbursements as we have in the past. Charter schools were previously not able to participate in tax revenue anticipation notes, or TRANS, which created an expensive cash flow issue for them. They will now have that option. Districts must now offer surplus property to charter schools before selling or leasing to other parties. And finally, there is an 8.7% reduction to several childcare programs, along with a suspension of the COLA for childcare and development programs for three years through Should the tax initiative fail, the final state budget allows for districts to reduce the school year by 15 days in addition to the five days already allowed. Also, the district will see trigger cuts of $457 per average daily attendance, which is $16 more than projected in the May revise. What wasn't included in the final state budget was establishing a new weighted student formula, along with flexibility for additional categorical programs which the governor had proposed. Funding for transitional kindergarten is maintained, which provides for the regular revenue limit funding for those students. Again, as outlined from School Services, there are risks to the state budget. The tax initiative, which we've known for some time, is the biggest risk. Currently, only 54% support the tax initiative, and I just read recently that that number is now a bit lower. And the approval of the high-speed rail project could hurt the passage of the tax initiative even more. At the time the poll was taken, one in three voters indicated they would be less inclined to vote for the tax initiative if the high-speed rail project was approved. Consumer confidence could decline with slower spending stalling the economic recovery. The debt crisis in the European Union could hurt United States exports, and disruptions in the supply of oil could cause energy prices to spike. Additional risks to the state budget include federal law changes that could trigger a recession. Examples include tax cuts that are set to expire in January, along with automatic federal spending cuts. And as always, the courts or federal government could disallow budget solutions enacted by legislature. An example includes Medi-Cal cuts that were previously disallowed. And the state's correction system is under federal receivership. In addition, reductions to safety net programs such as state supplemental payments and childcare are vulnerable to court challenge. And last but not least, the state revenue forecast could be flawed and too optimistic. Already, the Legislative Analyst Office has called into question the Department of Finance's assumptions regarding capital gains income. This chart should be familiar. It outlines the amount per average daily attendance we're entitled to statutorily. For 2012/13, it is $6,707 per ADA. Flat funding would be $5,785 per ADA. If the tax initiative passes, we should see $5,213 per ADA. If it doesn't pass, we expect our revenue limit per ADA to go down to $4,774. Just to give you an idea, if we were funded at the flat funding amount of $5,785 per ADA instead of the best-case amount of $5,213, we would have over $23 million in additional general funds. So here's the detail of the revision we're presenting tonight. As mentioned earlier, the final state budget increased the amount of the per ADA reduction by $16 from what was included at the May revise. That means a reduction of unrestricted revenue of $662,000. In addition, in the May revise, home-to-school transportation was to be flexible, and we reflected that as unrestricted revenue in the adopted budget. Now that it isn't flexible, there was a loss of unrestricted revenues of $1.2 million. With the mandated cost block grant, new in the state budget, we will see additional unrestricted revenue of $1.15 million. Payments from the state on prior-year mandates have been few and far between, so we didn't budget to receive anything for 1213, so this was good news for us. On the restricted side of the budget, the transportation revenue comes to the district as restricted for transportation. Between the unrestricted and restricted revenue, that leaves $488,000. Because the district received restricted transportation funds, the remaining dollars must go towards transportation. The $488,000 will be an increase in transportation expenditures, leaving no change to the bottom line from the adopted budget. Overall, we were very fortunate that the mandated cost block grant was included, or we would be looking at additional reductions to maintain a balanced budget. I'd like to outline the proposed safety routes that will be reinstated based on transportation funding. Severe safety routes are defined as crossing railroad tracks to attend school located within the student's school attendance boundary. Seven routes will accommodate those students attending Cesar Chavez and Edward Kemble, David Lubin, Joseph Bonheim, Theodore Judah, Washington, William Land, and Woodbine. And again, this would be for those students that live in an area that require crossing railroad tracks to attend school. Two additional routes will be added for safety, defined as crossing a major street or a significant distance but does not include all major streets. This would include the AMWINS students that have to cross Bradshaw, Abraham Lincoln students that live in the light rail area north of Highway 50, Caleb Greenwood students that live near Cal Expo, and students that attend Sequoia from the Camellia Basic area. It is important to note that this does not fully reinstate home-to-school transportation. About nine routes are reinstated, as some of the routes listed earlier are combined with mandated transportation. Staff will form a committee to review any written requests that identify serious safety hazards, and will work with the city and county transportation engineering departments if additional safety concerns arise. Staff also continues to review special education and program improvement choice routes, which are still included in the budget. Next steps include communicating the transportation information to our principals and parents in early August. We will be watching the November election closely to see what happens with the Governor's Tax Initiative. In December, you will see the first interim financial report and a budget calendar for the 2013-14 fiscal year. In January, the Governor's proposed 2013-14 budget will be released. And as always, staff continue to monitor any changes to the state budget that could impact education. That concludes the presentation, and staff are available to respond to questions.
I think we have some public comment, and we'll take public comment before we go to Board members.
We have two public comments on this item, from Ralph Merletti and Darlene Anderson.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board. My name is Ralph Merletti. I live in the Fruit Ridge area, and I just have general questions about this overall. It just seemed that the full school budget that was gone over the last time or before, there's too many generalities rather than specifics with or without the, I think, with or without the Governor's measure passing. As to, for example, programs, what kind of speakers are coming to some of the things that go on at the schools here, especially related in the Health Department, Health Matters? Where it says here, "8.7% reduction to several childcare programs." Which programs? Which ones? In other words, it's hard to go over through that whole book of the budget, but there don't seem to be enough specifics as to what's going on in each department. So in the future, I would say that the budget needs to be more specific on each issue, and that's the recommendation I would give. Thank you.
Darlene Anderson, there never seems to be enough time to really communicate what you have to say to the governing board, because the board has the responsibility to ensure that programs and services happen for its students. But when you're looking at Title I students, and we're looking at what the board has allowed the district to do in creation of programs, the board doesn't have, the board has an option to create a program, like an extracurricular activity. But when you create a school, then there is a requirement for comparability. Otherwise, you're looking at surplanting, not supplementing, students' education. And so, when I'm looking at the surplanting that was going on, and asking myself, is that the reason zero enrollment was that the board approved zero enrollment for those programs? Because there's no way any organization can come in and see how many students actually attended those programs. So why would the board do that? Why would the board allow the district to submit to it zero attendance? When I look at, overall, the student achievement in those programs, I'm not looking at great student achievement, but I do see that it has affected those students and their ability to receive the same quality and level of education that they would have gotten in a comprehensive high school. So, when I look at attendance in ADA, projections, SCE money, meaning the money that comes to the district for children in poverty, and I look at the schools around the highest poverty areas, and the allocations that come from SCE, which are greater, far greater than what the Title I dollars are going to the school, because the projections are always low. And that's why I asked for an audit. I think there needs to be an audit around the attendance. And I'm only one person, but I do represent another organization. And so I'm hoping that our letter gets to you soon, so we can start. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment. We have questions or comments by board members. Is that Member Terry?
Really, my only questions that I have are on Slide 15, because, and I'm amazed that this is still like this considering our plan of not having transportation dollars, that the students, and I know that it's only like 10 or 11 kids that are attending AMWINS that are crossing Bradshaw, and it's right behind the McDonald's there off of Bradshaw, that neighborhood. I mean, has there been any thought about just having those students directly attend James Marshall where they wouldn't have to cross a thoroughfare at all? And maybe that's not a question that you can address, maybe you're not that familiar with it, and I'm not sure who could, but, I mean, literally, when we did the scatter plots and we were talking about AMWINS, and the fact that we weren't going to have transportation dollars and that it stayed open, I think the assumption from everybody was that no children were going to be crossing AMWINS, or Bradshaw anyways, because of sequoia issues. So why, I mean, why are we even at a point of having to accommodate that?
And it is a small number, and what I will say is, that would, from my perspective, require a boundary change, and there's been a lot of talk about some boundary changes, and I know some recommendations that have come forward that maybe don't address this specifically, but we talked about implementing in 2013/14. So it's very likely that this would change potentially in that year, but for the immediate, as far as I know, there hasn't been any discussion to make that change.
And that has to take board action for a change like that to be made?
I believe so, yes.
I don't know if that's something that we can put on whatever colored sheet we're supposed to, to get something on the agenda.
Yellow.
Yellow? Okay, there you go. I think that's something we should put on the agenda immediately, because I don't see any reason that, I mean, literally, it's 11 children that could walk around the corner to James Marshall, you know, a quarter of a mile away, or they could go a mile and a half or two miles to get to AMWINS. So to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And the Sequoia busing too, again, what's the logic behind continuing to do this? I mean, this was a Brown versus the Board of Education, reason that we did this, correct? Back then?
Yes.
And if I remember, when we talked about the new routes, or the new attendance areas, that was an adjustment that was being made. So, again, I, you know, with the scarce dollars that we have, I mean, I wonder about bus drivers. I just wonder if these are the most important ones, and again, this is my trustee area, and, you know, I don't want kids walking across Bradshaw, obviously. But also, couldn't these buses be better used in other places?
Well, there's certainly no lack of need for transportation, as we stated, you know, special education, which is the bulk of our transportation, as well as the program improvement choices, you know, it's all, there's a lot of moving parts, and literally, for the transportation staff, so we can certainly take your comments and take a look at your suggestions.
I just wonder if there's a way, I mean, there's got to be better ways, or more needs than sending kids six miles away to go to Sequoia, and it's a handful of kids, and sending a handful of kids, you know, in a bus two miles when they could have walked, you know, a half a mile and gotten to a school. It just, to me, that's not, that's not, that's not the biggest need. The Lincoln one I get, I mean, we're still having kids that are in a crossroad here, which I'm not a big fan of, but I get, I get that if we don't bus them, kids that miss the bus for the Lincoln one don't go to school. We've learned that. It's going to hurt enrollment. But the other two just don't seem to make a lot of sense for what I know of my neighborhoods. So hopefully, it's something that we can get addressed before the beginning of the school year.
Certainly take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other board comments, questions? Actually, Member Terry just hit on a question that I wanted to ask, but a different, in a different kind of way. Camellia Basic is a magnet school, and the kids that live in that neighborhood cannot attend unless they're accepted into that school. And so, I understand the need for transportation there, but what other schools are similarly situated like that? And do we know the reason why they're not on this list? Because I know we have more than just that type of school in the neighborhood, where kids are unable to attend their own neighborhood school that's situated in their neighborhood.
I believe the reason this one's on the list is because of the excessive distance to get to Sequoia, almost six miles.
That's the only school that we have in that particular situation.
That would be that distance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And as far as specificity, I think Slide 13 pretty much sums up what we are voting on today, is just simply on the detail of our revision of the budget that we are approving at this point. So I am perfectly okay with the specificity outlined in Slide 13, because that's the purpose why we are here today, and I thank you very much for providing that to us. So with that, we are in conference, and I will entertain a motion to move into action.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Member Bell. So we have a first by Member Bell and a second by Member Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? So we have now into action, and I will entertain a motion. And we have a first by Member Bell, and a second, I couldn't hear that from either Wu or, Wu, thank you, so a second by Vice President Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions, so we have approved your revision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item 10.2, Recommendations for Renaming of Jedediah Smith Elementary School. It is a conference item, 5-minute presentation and 10-minute discussion, and it's going to be Mr. Billy Eylett.
Good evening, all of you. It's very humbling to be able to come and present to the Board about this particular initiative. Please understand that I'm presenting some recommendations that came about in a very grassroots collaborative sort of effort among students, staff, family members, and community members at Jedediah Smith Elementary School. So, oh, here's a clicker, let's see if it works. Ooh, it vibrates. There we go. So, one of the things that we've learned as part of the priority school process, and we're entering into our third year of our priority school redesign, is that our students, for many years, and our families and our neighborhoods, had their assets and their strengths ignored by the system. So one of the main tenets of our redesign is to magnify, is to celebrate, is to focus on the great strengths that the students and families bring to Jedediah Smith Elementary School. Part of the reason why we're making this proposal is to magnify some of the benefits that going to our school and living in our neighborhood and being part of the Jed Smith community have for our students, and trying to make sure that we are magnifying the relevance of our school within the lives of those children and those families. So I'll go quickly through the presentation. One of the things I think it's important for us to state is Jedediah Smith was named after an explorer when the school was built in 1952. You might not know who he was. I didn't know who he was when I was appointed principal, so I did some Google research as well as internet research, and he was a very important figure in the history of Western exploration and the expansion of the United States. But I wanted to ask the Board a couple of questions. Should our schools serve the past, present, or future? Should our schools be aspirational or reverential? We at Jed Smith know that our school must serve the present and future of our neighborhood. We have to be a bastion of hope and aspiration for our students, who oftentimes are completely dependent on our school and on our staff for being successful in public education. So, the proposal before you reflects the school district's strategic plan, especially Pillar 3. It also reflects the context of priority schoolwork and our redesign plan at Jed Smith. To connect to the school quality reviews of which Jed Smith has gone through, first in May 2010, and second in April 2012, the families and the students absolutely wanted us doing things differently and doing things that were relative to their lives. Unfortunately, issues of equity and issues of relativity of the school had been traditionally ignored, as you can see from the quote from the school quality review in 2010. So, how can we make school relative and relevant? One of the ways we can do that is authentically engage our families in redesign efforts. One thing we do know is that if you ask any of our family members, any of our students, who Jed Smith is, they won't be able to tell you. And that's not because it's not discussed at school, but it's because Jed Smith is not relevant to the lives of our students and our families. In fact, his life and his actions serve as a counterbalance to the assets and aspirations of our families and our students. So, through the organic conversation that was started by a parent and me, just hanging out in my office one Friday afternoon, we have conducted these particular meetings to sort of gauge where our students are, where our family members are, where our community members are, where our staff is, in regards to trying to do something different and start the renaming process. So you can see, and I think there's been an attachment of the supporting documents for all of these meetings, which have been very interesting, to be honest, very inspiring to see the level of engagement and thought and purposefulness that our families and our community have. So, we have authentically, in my personal opinion, engaged our families to hopefully come up with a proposal that will be more connected to our neighborhood. And the proposal that was put forward by the community is with two names. The first would be to name the school Leah Tata Floyd Elementary School. For those of you who don't know who Leah Tata Floyd is, she lives across the street from the school. I can see her house from the office, and she's lived there for the past 25 years. All of her children have attended Jed Smith, and actually, one of her children is currently the football coach at McClatchy High School. He's also a co-teacher over there. Ms. Floyd has been an advocate of the CV Circle and New Hellvisha community, and a family liaison within the neighborhood for the past 20 years. She also volunteers her time by organizing and teaching onsite a hula dance enrichment class. And our hula students, we finally got some boys to join the hula class, the hula girls have made presentations all throughout the city to sort of share a little bit about their culture and some of their interests. She also provides some homework support, and one of the things that's sort of exciting is that since her son is the football coach over at McClatchy, we oftentimes get volunteers from the McClatchy High Schools, his program, as well as football players, that come and do a little bit of community service with those students. To cut to the chase, there is strong community support for renaming the school to honor Ms. Floyd. She's relative, she's relevant, and she is truly one of the most inspiring people. She provides humbleness to me and my work, but also motivation to live up to the level of commitment and sincerity she has in support of all of her families and all of her students. The second proposed name was generated by the community advisory group, and that was Marina Grove Elementary School. This name is a combination of the two neighborhoods that our school serves. CV Circle was rechristened Marina Vista Neighborhood by the Housing Authority a couple of years ago, and New Hellvisha was rechristened Alder Grove. So in order to be relative to the geography of the school, rather than relative to a person who our families and our students cannot connect with, the group thought that we should move forward a geographic name. So, that's the proposal that I have. I know this is not an action item tonight, but I, you know, appreciate the time that you've taken listening to a presentation that comes from a lot of work of students and family members and staff, to look at doing something different in support of our redesign efforts at our school. So, I forgot to introduce Mr. Jones. This is my Assistant Principal, Mr. Jones. So, do you have any questions? Is there any information that I can share with you?
Actually, Mr. Eylett, we will have questions for you, but we're going to take, I mean, we're going to take public comment first, and then we'll invite you back up.
Okay.
Okay. So you can take a seat here.
Sure.
Thank you.
We have one public comment on this item, from Ralph Merletti.
Once again, my name is Ralph Merletti, and I live in the Fruit Ridge area. I take issue with this idea that Jedediah Smith was irrelevant, and, you know, there are, he had faults, he was not perfect, and I'll discuss some of this as quickly as I can. But quoting from sources listed in Wikipedia Online, "He was an atypical mountain man following Methodist practices. Smith was known to be a reserved, pious man who often read the Bible, meditated, and prayed. Smith never boasted, and having a stern personality only rarely was known to have any sense of humor. Smith did not practice sexual relations with the Native American women. Smith never smoked, got drunk, or used profanity. Smith was known for his many systematic, recorded observations on nature and to- Smith was known for his many systematic, recorded observations on nature and topography." Now, that's his personal characteristic, his view on American Indians. "While traveling overland throughout the American West, Jedediah's policy with the Native Americans was to maintain friendly relations with gifts and exchanges. However, if Jedediah felt Indians were being hostile to his party, he would make a demonstration by having one or two natives killed with a rifle." That's not something we'd agree with today, certainly. "This was done to discourage any further tribal aggression against him and his party." "Smith punished his men for indiscriminately shooting Indians without any perceived threat to his party. Smith's reluctance to kill American Indians was due to his Methodist faith and training." "Smith held contemporary beliefs that Native Americans were, for the most part, intellectually inferior to whites and considered untrustworthy. Smith stated that Indians were children of nature, a link between animals and humans." Now, obviously, he had faults, but still, he was an important figure. And the final thing is, what happens to the names of other schools in our district?
Thank you, Mr. Merlady.
Sutton, Brennan, and so on. Thank you.
Member Terry.
Well, first off, sure. It's great seeing you again.
Good to see you.
Miss you in Rosemont. You know, we have precedent of changing the names of schools. We just, I mean, Rosa Parks was Gady before, if I'm not, didn't we rename that?
Correct.
It was before I was here. But, so, we have precedent of doing it. The first one, I have a policy question that I didn't think of until you started talking. We have a policy, I believe, right now that we don't, we can't name a school after somebody living. Am I wrong?
The Board policy, you can.
We can.
Yes.
Okay, maybe, maybe it was just an issue when we were naming the Rosemont one that certain board members didn't like it. Maybe that's what I'm getting confused with. So, we can do it. You know, personally, I think it's, it's just fine, no matter what the neighborhood wants to do. And if a group of the community comes up and we don't hear, you know, logical opposition, then if that's what the school wants to do, that's what the school wants to do. My only concern would be is with funding where it is, that whatever costs come from this, that it needs to be raised privately to, you know, if we're going to repaint or buy new sweaters and things like that. Because if the community wants to come and take this step, I think the community should, you know, address whatever changes are going to be made by the, to the school to address it. And maybe that's under the phase in process over a couple of years or something like that. But I agree with you, and, you know, I think I had brought up to the superintendent when we were entering into the priority school program that we should entertain renaming each of the schools, if that's what the community wanted to entertain. Because what better way to relaunch a school with new leadership and everything else that we're doing at these schools than to consider giving them a new name? Because it's a whole new program that you have there, and you're doing a wonderful job. And, you know, the fact that, that the neighborhood came to you and, and that you're here in front of us is because of the engagement and the, and the work that, that you and your leadership team have done at that school. So, I'd entertain either one of them. I think I would lean more towards the second option, only because I think it gives a little bit more flexibility to the district. If it was somebody that was passed away, I think one of the big concerns is what happens in the future and things like that. And, you know, and again, and I'm not familiar with the person that, that you're suggesting in, in the first option. So, I would lean towards the second one personally, but I'd be comfortable with either one, so long as the district didn't have to find the funds to, to address. And we're not changing the school colors, right?
No.
Okay.
Or mascot.
All right.
Thank you. Member Bell.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. I think you might have, might not remember, Member Terry, but we did talk about this in March. I brought this to the Board in March after attending several of the meetings at Jed Smith and having the community members and Principal Ilet come to me and talk to me about this issue. And it seems, it was really driven from parents in the school and a very grassroots effort. So, when I brought this, and I think I also gave a little information on Leah Tata Floyd, who's, as the principal said, whose kids did go to school here and who's been a strong advocate in the community around the Jed Smith School. She's also a very humble person, and really, I think, one of the concerns was even her allowing the school to use her name, which I think took a little convincing of her to get her to feel comfortable with that. But she's a lovely human being, and she is wonderful with the kids, and the hula dancing is, is just fantastic. It's wonderful to see kids of all these different ages, and I'm really happy to, to know about the boys being involved, too, because they were kind of slow coming along. But it's, it's really quite a wonderful thing. She's been there for a long time, but I think now that the school's a priority school, there's been a lot more opportunity for her to excel and to shine. So, I just think, since this has come from the community, I mean, I completely support this. I think it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity. And then as far as the naming of the school, after hearing what the speaker said about Jed Smith, I wholeheartedly think we need to make, get rid of that name. Very, very patronizing man who, you know, would just, we, we need to make it more relevant to the students, somebody more positive for a diverse community, for females, males, people of all colors and nationalities. So, I think Leah Tata Floyd is a wonderfully relevant community member to have the school named after, and I just completely support it. And last of all, I wanted to just mention also about the Board policy. This is something that we discussed back in March, and I think I brought it to the Board's attention back in March, too, that although it's been, generally been our practice to name schools after people that have passed away, and the reason that was the case and has been the case in the past is because sometimes living people make mistakes that make you wish you hadn't named the school after them. But clearly, sometimes dead people have made mistakes that we find out later, which we hadn't named the school after them as well. So, that was why the practice was, to name schools only after people who had passed away. But I think in this case, and in the case of when we do our due diligence around who a school is to be named after, then it needs to be somebody relevant to the community. And in this case, I, I think it's a fantastic choice, and it will be a, an encouragement to the students who are currently attending the Jed Smith Elementary School. Good work.
Thank you, Member Bell. Member Kennedy.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. I just wanted to thank Mr. Merlady for coming out this evening and presenting such a clear and convincing argument that we need to change the name. So, thank you, sir, for coming. I appreciate it.
Vice President Wu.
So, can you share with us what the next steps are before, what will happen before, between now and the next school board meeting? Because I see the recommendation would be to bring it anticipated action for August 16th meeting. But what will happen between now and then? Because you have two recommendations.
Well, I think the community would anticipate coming and showing their support at the board meeting when it's an action item. So, I have a feeling at the Board's discretion, certainly those that are in support of naming the school after Tata Floyd can come and speak. She could come and speak, but to be honest, she's a very humble person. And part of the reason that this is the right thing to do, and this is a moral thing to do, is I can understand the previous speaker's information sharing about Jedediah Smith, but we're doing this to elevate, not to, to move away from or to castigate or put down anyone. And Tata, once you feel her energy, once you have an interaction with her, is certainly worthy of recognition. To be honest, she doesn't take any recognition for any of the support she gives the community. She has volunteered at our school for the past 10 years and refuses to take any, not only, you know, fiscal or any sort of support, but even any acknowledgement for this, because she cares about kids. And to be honest, I can't think of a more humble and also inspiring person. And, you know, she lives in the school. She lives across the street from the school out of choice. That's inspiring.
Now, I take it, then, that really Marina Grove Elementary School, as a proposal, is running a distant second?
Well, from the surveys that we've done and from talking with folks and, you know, throwing things against the refrigerator, see if it sticks, that certainly is a second. But distant second, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. I see your processes that came out, and I thank you very much for submitting all of your materials. By the way, I loved more than just the, the specific topic area of what you tried to present to us, because I see that you've also reached out to educate your community about other aspects that are important in education. So, thank you very much for doing that. But, you know, I'm just really curious about, you know, the value changes throughout time. And today, there's value that is placed on this individual, and rightfully so. Sounds like she's been a very deep part of this community. But what does this then look like in 20 years from now, when she's kind of a very distant memory, and people go, just like with Jed Smith, they go, who was Jed Smith? And, and tell you Wiki it, and then you find out, and you're going, hey, maybe it's time for a change. You know, there's many schools that are named after individuals, and people don't really understand what those individuals' contributions to society are. So, I wonder what the rationale was between why a person, instead of something that's reflective of the community, that's going to be there as an identifier for the community for many years to come?
Sure. Well, well, for, for a couple of things. First, to use an analogy, I'd much rather, you know, celebrate when someone can be around to receive that sort of celebration. I'd much rather give someone a bouquet of flowers than put it on their gravestone. So, the immediacy, I think, is important for our community because it's legitimizing, it shows value, it shows the system valuing someone who lives in CV Circle. And let's be honest, our system really hasn't valued a lot of folks in CV Circle for a bunch of different reasons. I also think there's a moral obligation. Jed Smith did not have the most positive beliefs around Native peoples. Many of our students have Native ancestry, or first peoples ancestry. He also didn't have the most positive beliefs around African Americans or slaves. Fifty percent of our kids are African American. And to be honest, when we get just down to the bottom of it, we've learned at Jed Smith that our school has to mean something for our kids to care about it. And there's no one else that I can think of in CV Circle, New Hellvisha, Land Park Woods that means more to everybody than Tata. You can walk anywhere in those neighborhoods and say, where's Tata live? And they'll tell you. Well, 107 CV Circle. And I think that's important. And I understand things do change, and as history progresses, people can have different opinions. And this would be a great opportunity to show the value of the people who make up my school's community, and their families and their culture. And I think that's incredibly important, and part of the redesign mission of the school and the priority school initiative and what we've got to do in education. We have to be looking towards the future, not the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And also, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly, again, state that I thank both you and Mr. Jones for your strong support for the Parent Teacher Home Visit Project that is alive and well and active in your community. And I think that it makes a lot of difference in bringing the community together to make these types of community decisions. And you're absolutely right. Nobody has ever been celebrated, as far as my history, living in Sacramento, from CV Circle, and it's long overdue. So, we don't have any more Board member comments or questions, and I look forward to this coming back and the community coming forward in support of whatever decision they, they make. Thank you very much for both of your time.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have pulled Item 10.3, so I'm going to make, we have a new 10.3, which is Education Funding Partners. It is an information item, five-minute presentation and 15-minute, sorry, five-minute presentation, 15-minute discussion. And that's Ms. Victoria Jakovic.
Good evening, President Rodriguez and members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name again is Victoria Jakovic, and I'm with Education Funding Partners. Tonight, we want to just spend a brief moment giving you an overview of Education Funding Partners' model and responsible, how responsible sponsorship works in, in school districts. This slide here just shows you what hot topic this is, where sponsorship dollars are coming into schools on an ongoing basis nationwide, and how important it is to utilize corporations to help fill those funding gaps that are out there. So, as I was saying, the challenge is, how are we going to fill those budget gaps? And one of the solutions that Education Funding Partners brings forward is using the corporate relationships we have to bring responsible partnerships to school districts. We are a B Corporation, which means we've taken a social responsibility pledge, and any sponsorship that comes to the school district gets final approval for all brands, messaging, and messaging locations within the school districts themselves. Some further discussion that we'll go over here briefly is what the model looks like, examples, how it's a turnkey program for you, and then any Q and A that you want to have. So, the model is a K-12 public education model. We strictly work in the K-12 education field. We aren't looking to go outside of that field. We have an extensive network of over 500 corporate relationships, and we currently are representing about a million students nationwide. It's a 100% commission-based opportunity, so there's no risk to the school district or no additional expense. The expense comes as an 80/20 split, with 80% going to the school district. And our target goal for each school district that we work with is somewhere between $10 and $20 per student. We focus on these benefit district zones in order to maintain our responsibility, things like health and wellness, STEM initiatives, athletics, parent engagement. This is where our corporate sponsors come in and want to be actively involved with school districts. One of the key aspects of the model is that we will come in and help you value the inventory that you have available in your school districts, and a key part of that is making sure you're not overvaluing it or undervaluing it. Currently, most school districts undervalue what they have and the ability that it is available for them to create dollars for their general fund, negotiating contracts, management and implementation, and then securing those payments to you. The examples come in typically these three categories, core, programmatic, and unique. An example of the core inventory that you might have and some that you're probably already using would be stadium signage, e-newsletters, website advertising, sort of the obvious ones that may already be utilized in your school. An example of a program would be a Staples program that we're currently doing with several schools in your district, and it would have multiple aspects to it. So, maybe a webpage ad, a letter, school supply list, and then a coupon that can go to the, to the parents as well. Health and wellness would be the, an example of flu shots and having a program against, surrounding those. A literacy example of a program is maybe recycling of books. And then a unique inventory opportunity would be maybe a spelling bee, a STEM contest, regional fairs, science fairs, things of that nature. It is a turnkey program. First, when a contract is signed, we come in and help you evaluate what your inventory is, evaluate that inventory, what sort of dollars could be made from it. Then we match existing sponsors that we have or go create new and additional sponsors that are specific to your area, create a project plan, and we have people who work at each one of these steps, and then we implement and generate the revenue. So, in summary, Education Funding Partners is, works in the corporate arena to help you negotiate contracts-- contracts, bring opportunities to the school districts that are sustainable and responsible. There's an 80/20 split, 80% to the district. There's no upfront startup costs, and it's a low-risk, high-reward opportunity with us targeting $10 to $20 per student per year.
I see we have no public comment on that. And we have board member questions. Member Terry.
Do you have a list of corporations that you're currently working with, and a list of school districts that you're currently working with?
Yes, we do. And I can get you a list, or I can name some now if you'd like. We're currently working with Staples. We have negotiations going on with Samsung, Aetna. We've had some with Liberty Mutual, and we've had CVS, Walgreens, and just as a few sponsorships.
Are those mostly in the form of, and I'm sorry, I don't have the PowerPoint in front of me.
That's okay.
In the form of the Staples example that you were showing?
Many of them are programmatic, and then there's also the opportunity to have just pure, sort of a more pure advertising opportunity. So, say, another one is Kellogg's. If they're doing a healthy breakfast-type program, or healthy breakfasts is something that they do, they might pay for the advertisement on a cafeteria wall or something of that nature.
I'm just, and mind you, my day job is I'm a community relations manager for
Sure.
a very large company. The fee structure that you're talking about, while it's commission-only, to me seems very generous. And the things that I'm seeing here, as somebody who does this for a living, I've never worked through a consultant with any school district or organization to do the kind of things that you're describing. So, before I be comfortable with any of this, it would have to be flushed out way more. And again, not to say that you couldn't bring value to the district, but a lot of the things that you're describing are things that we're doing, or have done in the past. And, you know, corporations move on to other projects, other districts, other focuses, and, I mean, that's just how it works. But I'm just wondering how, you know, a one-fifth cut of a program like this seems, you know, extremely generous for a finder's fee or something to do these. So, I'd really like to see some more information and some other success stories. Are there other districts locally that you're working with?
Yes, we're currently working with Twin Rivers, Natomas, and San Juan districts.
Any specific success stories that you can share with us locally that, and again, I'm not sure if you're allowed to do that based on?
Yeah, each of those was involved in the Staples program that we did. And currently, we're also with San Juan. There's a Sterilife program that is supplying all of the hand sanitizers, so there's obviously an expense reduction for the school district there, and then they are given dollars in addition to that. So, in each one of these things, there is the program, and a lot of that's paid for by the sponsorship, but then there's actual physical dollars that are given to the school as sort of an advertising dollar amount.
So, are most of these relationships on the non-philanthropic side of corporations? So, you're working through marketing and
Yes.
and advertising divisions, not as much
Yes, we aren't working on the
community partnerships?
Yeah, we aren't working on grants or philanthropic. That would all potentially go, you know, you may potentially work with the same organizations, but work through your foundation or something like that.
And so, and the Staples example that you're showing here, I mean, I'm familiar with teachers that can go and sign up for the card to save money, and then they can create wish lists and all these other things that are already designed as something from Staples. So, how is this program different from the things that, you know, a outgoing teacher would
Well, I think the difference is that the teachers, the teachers have opportunity to that, but the reach for Staples is now also to parents who are going to look at the school supply list, teachers, and potentially other community folks. So, they're getting their opportunity to put their name out there for more people to see.
Member Terry, if I can add that I think in the scenario that you mentioned, individuals, teachers, aren't generating revenue for schools or district. They might have a deal that provides a good service for parents or a service for the classroom, but it's not actually generating dollars for the school or for the district.
Okay. Okay, yeah. I'd like, if we could get a little bit more information, I'd really love to see
Absolutely, I'd be happy to get that for you.
a more extensive list of who you're working with. So, again, and again, I really do appreciate the presentation. I'm very interested in it, but as somebody who does this for a living, I'm also, you know, wanting to be very careful, too.
Vice President Wu.
So, can you further break down for me how the, your 80/20 shared proposal is? I can see in terms of raising advertising dollars, for example. That's money. Would it include, in your example where you have hand sanitizer, for example, and it is, results in cost savings to the district? Thank you. Would you take credit? Would it be, because it's not cash in our pocket, but it's cash that we're avoiding to pay, would the 20% be calculated based on that value as well?
No, it's calculated strictly on the cash donation that comes into the school district. So, anything that the sponsor themselves chooses to pay for as part of putting that sponsorship together does not, EFP doesn't take any part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I love when questions kind of get set up so that I can ask follow-up questions. So, in the matter of cost avoidance, how do you guys measure that? And is that kind of measured in part of your successes?
It ends up being measured by sort of a per-student or per-school location. So, for example, it would depend on, you know, if you're going into a high school and you put three hand sanitizers in there, you know, what is the cost typically for the school district to supply that for a year? So, we would, you know, look at it from that perspective. And then, if it's going in district-wide, you might look at it as a cost savings per student.
So, I see, and it's unfortunate, sometimes it's helpful to have a printed presentation so that we can refer back to whichever slide it was. But in your slide, it said something about a $20 to $40, I think it was, per student.
$10 to $20 per student is the goal that we try to raise for each district. So, it could be somewhere in the middle of that, depending on your district.
So, it would be, but you're saying per student, per student in terms of cumulative of our entire population, or the specific school, schools that you are targeting?
Well, we look at it as the district, so it would be your entire district population. And then, so we look at it typically from that standpoint. If you want to break it down to school, we can certainly, you know, do the same thing from a school perspective.
And in understanding that we're dealing with corporate vendors at this time, you know, what is the protections for, that are built into any contracting to have vendors from these corporate entities, from, what's precluding them from approaching board members, saying, "Hey, you know, I kind of want to entertain a contract with your district"?
There's nothing precluding them. We try to have an exclusive contract with you, and, you know, it is our intention that we are going to bring you as many of those as possible. But if you are approached outside of Education Funding Partners, then we are not going to kind of get in the middle of that and try to upset the apple cart. If there's a way for us to participate and help you get even more, or create a bigger idea out of it, then we're happy to get involved and sort of figure that out from there. But if you're approached on your own, particularly from a local source that may already be working with you, we're not going to get in the middle of that.
So, I think I heard you kind of muffled. Is there exclusivity, or is there not exclusivity in your?
There is an exclusive, there is exclusivity in that, you know, we don't want to be competing with other people doing the same thing, but we're not going to compete with the school district, in the sense that if you get sponsors coming directly to you, we're not going to get in the middle of that.
President Rodriguez, if I can, can I think shed a little bit more light as well? Our current board policy allows us the opportunity to sell advertising currently, so this partnership doesn't change that in any way. We can, we still have the ability to solicit and create partnerships on our own. The reality is, we don't have the capacity or the relationships to do it at the level that Education Funding Partners is proposing. So, they would essentially act as an intermediary to sell these partnerships, sell these sponsorships, and provide us with the revenue. So, the exclusivity would come in, correct me if I'm wrong, Victoria, as it relates to other agencies sort of acting as that intermediary, not as it relates to the district or schools soliciting partnerships or sponsorships on our own.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for the clarity. On the topic of social responsibility, what is that pledge again?
That we are going to bring responsible, relevant education programs to the school district, and that you have full choice of what sponsors you'd like to come in. You can say no to any of those at any time. Where they put their sponsorship, you know, if it's on a wall, or a scoreboard, or whatever it is, you can always say no to that, and you can say no to the program as a whole. So, it's entirely up to you. We bring it to you, we package it up, and you can say yes or no.
And who decides where some of these advertisements go, or all of the advertisements go?
As part of the implementation process, we help you identify what we call assets. So, that might be a wall in a cafeteria, or a library, or, you know, those key benefit areas, health and wellness, that you might feel are a good fit for your district. We talk to stakeholders, and we sort of identify that list, and then we work from that list. So, it's a joint effort between the district and EFP to identify what makes the most sense.
And these identification, or these areas of identification, are those presented to, will those be presented to us beforehand, before we decide to enter into this agreement?
I think that as part of the initial inventory assessment, EFP will do a full assessment of all of our schools, and sort of create a full list of inventory items available. Then, they have that at their disposal as they're going out and soliciting sponsorship relationships, as they're soliciting corporate partnerships. They can then have that kind of list of, that menu of items, so to speak, from which to sell, and then they come back to us, and I think this is correct, Victoria, correct me if I'm wrong, but they come back to us with a proposal that says, "Company XYZ wants to bring in, you know, Y amount of revenue, and these are the inventory items that that would include." And we can either choose to accept or decline that opportunity, depending on our wishes.
And the looping in of the community members, are they going to be considered in that process? You know, I mean, students, parents who frequent the school site, teachers, principals, you know, I'm sure that
In the benefit zones, we typically talk to stakeholders that are in relation to the school district. Having sat in on a number of those, I've talked to principals, to technology people, to not usually students or parents, so that would be something that we could consider if that's important to you in this process. But certainly, you know, health and wellness, or nursing people, STEM initiative folks, so we've looped in quite a few people in those processes in the past. And we can work with you to determine what you want that list to look like. We can give you sort of what we've done in the past, and you can decide.
Well, I'm just thinking for effective advertisement, you want to be able to at least gather some sort of a focus group from the areas that you're looking to target, and that would include those who frequent the campus.
I think the answer is yes, absolutely. Those groups will be part of the process, and certainly, especially school site leadership. We won't be placing ads at a school without working with the principal to make sure that it's a relationship that works for both the site leadership and for the entire school community.
Okay. And on, last question, on the average amount of contract. On average, what types of, the dollar amount of contracts have you secured for the school districts that you're currently?
And those can vary. Sometimes, they start out as an initial pilot, and many school districts in this area, we've just gotten started with them, have made anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000. But we have, the Samsung potential coming up could be $250,000.
Includes my questions. We don't have any more board member comment or question at this time. So, I want to thank you very much for taking the time to come here. Next steps, Mr. Gay Ross.
We have a, some draft language for a potential contract that we'll be getting out to the board, I think, was it in this packet? Yeah, I think that you all have a draft, some draft contract language for your perusal, and we can come back and address at the next board meeting.
Okay. And would you be open to doing information sessions with board members if needed?
Yes, absolutely.
Outside of, okay, thank you.
Can I ask, the requests that I had, if we could get those, obviously, at least a week prior to the next board meeting, then I can follow up personally, but the list that I was asking for, I'll need before. We won't.
Item 10.0, Business of Financial Information Reports. It is receiving information. Item 10 points, I mean, sorry, 12.0, Future Board Meeting Dates and Locations. We have August 16th, 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session, and September 6th, 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session. And we have an adjournment at item 10, I mean, 13. I motion to adjourn. So, we've got student board member, and with the first, and a second by member of Royal to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, and abstentions, and we have an adjournment. Thank you.